I don't know. The televised...
Yeah, I had, I didn't do my research. I didn't look it up on the internet. And then I all surprised myself.
Are you guys with the...
Hi, I'm Michelle. Noah.
Alicia.
Alicia.
Hi.
You want to... You're gonna?
Yeah.
How about...
About others?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny.
Thank you for coming.
You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny. Thank you for coming. You guys like Eagle Scout kids? You're already are? So is my brother. We got our own, jump in along. He's got... You're so funny.[654.14]
Pretty much every morning, my entire summer, started with a bowl of cereal and hiked through the park. All the neighborhood kids pretty much had that down there with us. And I would have the same experience for my son when he was growing up, so I thought I was one street out of our market ride. We spend every day in the park that we can, three times a week at least. Show you the different plants that grow in the woods and trees. And when we come through the park, we walk past the fence, they get a pot playground. And he would say, "Why doesn't anything grow back there?" I didn't know, so I decided we'd address that and see what we can get to grow back there. Me and him garden every day, and as people walk through the neighborhood, we always offer them neighbors, whatever they could pick from the garden, regardless of whether we have it. I just thought that it would be nice to carry that on to the whole community instead of just letting people walk past our house. And we had the idea around for quite a while now with a few of my friends. Everybody's I've talked to has encouraged me, just do it, do it, do it. I figured, I started a Facebook page. I couldn't leave my house ungrown, how many people I met in our neighborhood. I'm about to say with Tacker, did you hear that?
We named him. There are two of them.
Yeah, this conversation's the last several days, you know, like this bird or that plant that we're gonna identify or grow in the garden. We have a few supporters here with us, like I've reported here, and I think they all feel pretty much the same way. We do. They have some letters there of people that couldn't make it tonight, they've shared their input. And the Boy Scouts asked to do it. We've spent a lot of help, you know, getting some stuff done around the garden. But we're here, we're asking for approval to get this going and...
And so ultimately, in the end, to take a vacant piece of property, what you have in front of you is you have an overview of what the property currently looks like. It is a fallow field that really is not producing anything but weeds. I think it's pretty rocky and it's not productive. The community right now doesn't utilize that piece of property because it doesn't provide any entertainment. There aren't a lot of plants, there aren't a lot of flowers, there's not a lot of much that grows there. So what the proposal is for the community is that between Bob and I, we provide the structure to permit, if you permit us, to put together a community garden. And what is a community garden? It's the opportunity for a governance structure. Of course, we would want to be a 501(c)(3). I'm volunteering my services for free to assist in organizing as a 501(c)(3). I think you probably are all familiar, a 501(c)(3) permits an organization to do fundraising and commit those funds back to the mission. And the mission, as you see in the garden, is really just to promote and protect the green space in the neighborhood. And actually, I would probably convert that to say to improve the green space, because right now the green space is not in great shape. To provide residents of the neighborhood with a beautiful place to garden, to provide the community and residents with somewhere to go and meet and work if they don't have space in their own land, and to promote the handsome value of Hilltop Park in the community. So that's the idea. If you look at the mission, the mission is going to fit a 501(c)(3). Once we get approval, I struggle a little with what do I provide you in regards to documentation? Well, it's premature for me to give you bylaws to tell you we're gonna have a president under treasurer and secretary. Are we having a vice president or not? There's no benefit for me to provide that and do all that work until we know that the commissioners are in agreement to take this fallow piece of property and allow us to commit the efforts in the time to develop it into a piece of property that will assist the community. As Bob and I were talking, I said to him, "Okay, we need to think about what are the commissioners gonna consider." And as a lawyer, I always have to think about the negative, because once I prepare myself to address the negative, then I know that we're in good shape. So what's the negative for the community? Well, if you look at the topography of the land, it's not going to impact drainage. We are not going to take old aged trees that are providing beauty and comfort. This is a fallow piece of property. This property is not producing anything right now. Is there going to be a financial, negative financial impact to the community? Not that I can see. Bob is very involved in the Boy Scouts. I know that we have a very active Boy Scout community in North Huntington. We have three Eagle Scouts here with us today, providing their support and, to me, imparting to you the understanding that this is the perfect Eagle Scout-type project, help us build some beds. We would not be adjusting the use of this property so that, God forgive us, if we defunct in three years. What is the North Huntington Township gonna have? You're gonna have, I don't know, twenty raised beds to take out, and the property is actually, to be perfectly honest, going to be improved, because right now there is no soil. So what you would have is take a bunch of lightly untreated lumber that's gonna create our raised beds. You take that out, spread the soil, and your property is actually improved. So I've been trying to figure out with Bob, what could the negatives be? And how can I convince you that this is a relatively risk-free endeavor for the township to engage in? And I don't think I really need to go on very much on what the positive impact of the community is going to be. You're gonna have the ability for children to go with their parents in order to see the progress of the planted seed and it grows, and then you eat what comes out of the ground. We are gonna be taking a piece of property that has absolutely no value to the community right now. We're gonna be converting it, we're gonna make it positive, it will be beautiful. And in addition to all of that, there is the potential for the excess of any flowers or fruits and vegetables that are grown to be donated to the food bank or the community in general. We're also going to create another opportunity for the Boy Scouts and any other, whether there are religious groups that have community service projects that they need to engage in, we're going to be providing an opportunity for those groups also to have another positive project for them to engage in. So I'm not sure I want to apologize to you for not having bylaws, because Bob and I have gone back and forth in the last week and a half, do we bring paper to you or do we not? The rules that you have in front of you, they're... This is the sort of, I don't know, what do you, skeleton of what we would like to develop. We can't get what we could, but, you know, I was against spending too much money. We don't want to start a 501(c)(3) and pay the fee unless we know we're gonna be approved. So it's our hope that you see our dream of taking a fallow piece of land with very low risk to the North Huntington Township community of failure and allow us to put it to good use for the community in general. And as you can see through the garden rules, there's the opportunity for different levels of membership and nominal fees. As soon as we get approval, we can go ahead and secure, I would suspect, that there will be community businesses that would like to provide sponsorships. There's a fenced-in area already, we can post sign and things like that if we have approval to be allowed to do that. So allow the local community to get recognition for the support of this. And I guess in closing, Bob and I really would just, we would like to have a little community garden. We'd like to grow vegetables, so...
I'd like to show the piece to my neighborhood, we walk by there and I'll say, "There's something growing there, and that's because we did that." I wish that they could make it a little better place.
Does anyone have any questions for us?
We're gonna do all the assistance at the first, and we'll call that on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim Gerdley?
Yes, my name is Jim Gerdley, I live at 341 Marbury Drive in North Huntington. I'm here representing my neighbors and other residents on that street. I'm questioning a house 350 Marbury Drive that has deplorable conditions in its yard. The yard and both backyard are overgrown. A neighbor next to that house has trapped three raccoons and a groundhog, who turns out by health issue. We'd like to know what the disposition from the board and what can be done concerning the appearance of that house. It's actually evaluating our property. It's a very nice street, except for that one house. And we'd like to know if we're fine to possibly be letting against that individual that owns that house. We know that she's unfortunately not, was able to get refinanced, and her homeowner's alone. So she does have money. But we'd like to know what can be done with the appearance, because as I said, it's evaluating our property, and it's an eyesore.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next citizen is Rayn Betts.
7764 East Denver Drive. I have three questions this evening. First of all, I'm kind of sorry that Mr. Bertani isn't here, because maybe he could have helped with this question. Have any of the fire companies responded to the request concerning the new practice area? Just calling it a practice area. And which ones have responded, and what were their comments? I was at the meeting a few months back where this topic came up, and I was wondering if there was any follow-up to that. And also, where are we going on the investigation? Has there been any additional information from either the county or the state agencies? And number three, yes, I know that we're streaming these meetings now, and I was just wondering if you might consider using Comcast Public Access that have these meetings publicly on Comcast? Because I think that that's a better venue for this. I think public meetings on public access television is probably better than streaming. And I was wondering if the board had considered that, instead of streaming to something on Comcast, since they are the major player here in the township? That maybe they, I know they do offer public access time. I don't know whether you'd have to use their equipment, or whether you can use equipment that's compatible with them. Oftentimes, they aren't live, but they're recorded, and that's okay. But I think that the public would have access, more public would have access in that way than streaming. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our citizen's input. The board does talk about the first one, Mr. Tacker, and that to do with the water on Old Trail.
I think the comment of the question is whether or not, Old Trail's scheduled to be repaved later on this summer, so it will be redone. I believe that was your comment.
Yeah, right.
And it'll be curb-to-curb, it'll be the entire length of the road, July, August. We did a first mobilization, we hit some paint, but Old Trail wasn't part of that. It will be part of the second for certain, but it will be done.
And I know it's not a township problem, the water company created it.
But it's gonna be paved.
It's been that way all winter.
Right.
And they did that two years ago, or a year ago on Lincoln Way, and it took one full year to pave it.
You're right. I travel Lincoln Way a lot, so I'm familiar with what you're talking about. But it actually will be done this summer. We're going to do it on our paving contract, and the water company contributed a significant sum of money to us to do that. So we're gonna finish it curb-to-curb around there, just pay one lane or pay the, you know, pave the trench. That's gonna be, when it's done, it should be pretty nice for you folks. Appreciate the patience. Thank you.
Next two citizens had to deal with Hilltop Park Garden. Any comments on that? Questions?
I'm just looking at, the area I believe you're talking about is when you go into the park, when it's originally on the left, where it's already fenced off.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, yeah, that was a, I believe that was a fuel area for the township for a long time. That's probably why you don't see a whole lot growing there. I mean, I, for one, I kind of like the idea, I'm not sure in the legal aspects to it. We're gonna have to talk to our council and add, and the other board members, and add the raised gardens, I can see you're gonna have to do that. And I'm assuming this area back here, is that compost bins or...
Yes.
Thanks, Joe. That's all I have to say, but I like the idea.
I agree with Dwayne that, I like the idea, but again, like he said, I know that was a dump area for the township, and I'm sure that's where you'll see a lot of growth there. The number one concern I have would be security. I mean, what happens? I think we've had some vandalism, or at least some trespassing over that, but we've had some issues in that part. I would have some concern about whatever does develop there, and the responsibility for that, and how we would control that. The other concern I have would be, and maybe this would be addressing the bylaws and the organizational structure or something, how it would be scheduled and exactly how much time the township staff would have to put into it. That would be a concern.
I think I can address that.
We need to go up.
I'm so sorry. In reviewing, in preparation for today's meeting, I spent a number of hours reviewing bylaws of other community gardens across the United States. Specifically, there was one in Texas, and it's a very large community garden organization in Philadelphia. And I looked to see if there was the necessity of community support from a township or organization in their design that I see. So other than talking about the fence, if there's gates, are we using your fence, is it gonna be ours? You know, that kind of thing, other than the fence, I, do you see anything else?
No. Regarding the first point, I know at least three of the members that are really interested to get in there, they're probably above the park, they're gonna keep eyes on. I really think that bringing the eyes to the park should keep away any problems. At least that's my hope.
We would certainly want to look at, and again, with our solicitor, you know, would we consider leasing a piece of ground? I mean, there's so many questions to answer, which would certainly, if the board has interest in this project, we'd certainly spend staff time on trying to, you know, research it and make it work for, you know, for both parties. One question I have is, what is your timetable? We're already into May, I'm assuming you're thinking about next year. I think it might be difficult to get this off the ground. I know my own garden at home, which is a very small garden, we planted it this weekend. So I'm thinking, you're thinking for the future, because even though the township moves fast, it takes us months to move fast.
And I really, I was, it was disheartening to Bob, but I was providing that kind of foresight for him. I really think a bunch of people were hoping they could just throw tomatoes and a pot. And we have started discussing the fact that this may take a bit of time. Including the fact that I would suspect you would like to see some bylaws and governance, and where's the liability gonna fall, and, you know, how are we going to ensure ourselves if we have to? And I would suspect you want to see us get a 501(c)(3). But we initially, I initially, my time is money, your time is money. I would like an idea as to whether you're seriously going to... Seriously consider. Because if I go through the time, you'll investigate 501(c)(3), we need to get, you know, a community committee together, our people, and start having meetings, and, you know, bylaws just don't create themselves, and then get the 501(c)(3) application and get it approved, and those types of things. We're looking at a significant investment as well, so I appreciate the comments that we're getting. I'm just hoping that we can get enough of a response from you so that we're both comfortable committing more time, money, energy, in getting this done. I was making a 501(c)(3) application, it's free, so we're gonna have to spend some money.
And even if we're not able to build this summer, late summer, there aren't, it might fall, like, come spring, everything's blooming and...
He's being eternal optimist, he's an eternal optimist.
Well, that's a more reasonable timeframe, so that's, I just wanted to, you know, question that, I just assumed that my point is to make it clear to the board that we're moving that fast.
And Mr. Alexander, I would be very happy to engage with your office. I realized earlier today that I don't have this part with me, which is pretty silly as a lawyer. But I know Bruce, and we will give you guys a call. And we can vet out someone, if you have the opportunity to have a private discussion, we can vet out some of the additional questions from a legal perspective. And I guess, I have a question for you as well, if a survey is necessary? If you all would require a survey to determine what piece of a parcel is actually gonna be donated for this community public use?
I would say it depends. There are probably so many things that we would want to talk about as a staff, with the parks director, and legal. We would just want to talk about it. What we would do, if the board would be willing, we'd come back and give them some recommendations, pros, cons, things to think about. Ultimately, they would say, "Okay, we like this," or "We're not concerned about your issues." I think that's how I would recommend proceeding, is let us spend a little bit of time, we could bring it back to them, I think, for our next meeting, June. At least with a pretty nice frame for them, maybe to make some additional decisions, or maybe enough to make a decision at that point.
That would be great.
I don't want the board to swap, it sounds like you're general, basically, to consider this.
So would you like for us to get meetings together and have a draft of some bylaws for you by then? What do you want to see from me?
I, you know, to be honest with you, it's probably, the best thing for us to do is probably meetings and staff, and we can definitely get ahold of you. Or you can get ahold of Versus Law, to get your contact info. But let us spend a little bit of time on it, and rather than you do anything else, let us spend a little bit of time. You spend some time on putting this together. We'll spend a little bit of time on it, and then maybe we'll sit down as a group, or whatever it is. But let us at least kick around a little bit internally.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim Gerdley. A little question. Is there any other community gardens around you, surrounding areas?
Absolutely. There's Turtle Creek, there's one in this year, and Genetals, there's probably another one this year. They're around, there's a lot of them. I'd like to do ours, just a little bit more community involvement. You don't have to be a father to be a part of it. I want as many people to enjoy what grows there as possible. I want to have, you know, flower bed or garden community areas, so...
I think it's a great idea, you know, to be able to support it in the back also, and, you know, bring residents together to enter.
I think it's a good idea and a great new life to Hilltop Park. Bring a lot of different set of eyes to Hilltop Park. I know I usually go up there about twice a week, and sometimes I see some shady characters coming out of Hilltop Park. So a lot more people up there, I think the shadiness will go away, because they want to be seen up there. I think even when Dan is done, the ball field up there, you know, if you imagine, you know, we put bleachers in there, and Dan put patriotic ribbons up there for a neat day for the kids. I had like four or five run-palls just from that. Imagine what a garden could do, so...
Well, we're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, citizen with Jim Gerdley, had talked about Marbury Drive, and one citizen up there on 350.
Just for a little bit of background, some of the board members that have been there for some time, they're familiar with this property, because it's the same property that, I'm gonna say, within the last few years, we had some residents, Mr. Gerdley, when I come to that point, I don't recall, I apologize. We had multiple residents from the street, and we had some photos at that point. I'm sure nothing's changed for the positive, but it looks the same, or, and it looks, I would say, overgrown from a standpoint of how most people keep their property. I think when we looked at it at that time, I know that Canadian Blanca's office, the code enforcement folks have looked at this, they've vetted the house, they've vetted the property. I think our biggest struggle is, we have an ordinance that deals with high grass, weeds, things like that. And my understanding is, Mr. Gerdley, might correct me, is that that's not the problem with this property. It's just an abundance of vegetation, more than maybe what you were planning in your yard, the closeness of the bushes, the number of bushes, and how big they are. We don't have an ordinance that addresses that. And I think when the board considered this some years ago, I think the majority of the board thought it would just be difficult for enforcement or a couple of regulations that would address, like, how big bushes can be, or spacing between bushes, or things like that, to be the things you'd be looking at to get this property the way you want it to look. But that being said, I'll leave it open for comments, questions, and you might even have some thoughts on this. I know you're aware of it, but it's that, I know that I've spoken with Josh before about this property, and I think that he would do whatever he can to bring in the compliance. But I think from his perspective, the landscaping is out of compliance, because there's no compliance issue there.
I believe there's two issues, one is the outside of the house, the other one is the inside of the house. The inside of the house, this was, you know, one of the infamous type cat ladies that had multiple pets, pet urine everywhere, and the house was in foreclosure. I've just been texting with Tom McGuire, our building inspector, and he confirms what you said, that he understands she was able to get a loan to get it out of foreclosure and to do some repairs. He has been waiting for whichever contractor she selects to get in touch with us, but he doesn't know the extent of what's going to be needed until the floor coverings are lifted and at least the lower half of the drywall on the walls is removed. So he really doesn't know at this point how bad the damage is and what needs to be done to make repairs on the inside. I concur with John, I think we have discussed the outside of the home before, and her idea of a well-kept yard maybe doesn't comply with our idea of a well-kept yard, but it wasn't an issue of excessive height of grass, it was an issue of, I seem to remember a picture somebody brought in, there was vines that were growing out the telephone pole and across the wires and...
Abundance, there was abundance of vegetation.
But while that wasn't my taste, she thought it was in great taste, and I don't know that there is any ordinance in any town that aesthetically says this is okay or it's not okay. I'm not sure how to proceed with that.
If I may, if you drove all that house, I mean, you would think that the house would come down, even though it isn't, due to the condition of that yard, because of the overgrowth. The front yard is just as bad as the backyard, and as I said, it's starting to attract, like, animals. Raccoons, groundhogs, snakes, we don't know. But the general appearance of that house, again, is evaluating our property, because it looks like it's condemned. I mean, you cannot see grass, you can just see shrubs growing wild. The driveway's deplorable. The bushes on the side of either house are more protecting the neighbors on either side from using that house. I live across the street from that house. If I ever had a sell-out house, I couldn't, or I would have to ask for a lower amount of money if anybody could come out on the front porch and sit and look at that thing. I'd be losing money if I tried to sell my house, because of the appearance of that. Like I said, in Pittsburgh, they have ordinances in regards to the upkeep of somebody's yard. What we're asking for is if some type of fine can be letting that she has a maximum of days to improve that yard, both running back, and that isn't compliant with a certain period of time, I respect that fine would be levied on her, and she didn't comply with that, it would double until she puts the house into, or the yard, actually, is what we're concerned about, that yard into something that is presentable. Because, again, if, we have, there's a lady just down the street from me, she's telling me that she's selling her house. She might have a hard time, because it's a catty corner to the house in question. Now, people are gonna come to look at her house, and they're gonna come out and say, "Oh, my gosh, what is that over there?" We have many people come by and ask, "Who lives in that house?" In fact, three weeks ago, the lowstruck came to deliver new kitchen cabinets, sink, countertop, whatever, and the drivers came over, and there was no one there. So I walked over, and I got that particular time, and I didn't know the house had been repurchased or refinanced. And I said to the driver, I said, that house is condemned, he said, boy, it sure does look like it.
Excuse us, sir, we, we've got the idea what needs to be done. Um, I'm not sure that we can do anything, I think that's what Andy's trying to tell you. We, we have no ordinance on to do anything with anybody's personal property, how they keep their facility at all.
Right, what would have to happen is, I think the board would have to give us direction to say, to develop some sort of regulations that would, that would address Mr. Gurley's concern. And again, we know that can't be subjective, it can't be that Andy or his staff look at it and kind of say, yeah, that's kind of what I want your yard to look like, it has to be objective. So it's going to need to be how big bushes are, how spread out they are, identify these different kinds of bushes, and then say how tall they're, they're going to be. Um, I, I empathize with what you're saying, everybody here on to home can understand what you're saying, and we, I've been down in Marbury, already a lot of the board members have, Andy's been there, I've been there recently. Uh, not for that reason, for, for other reasons, and, um, I understand what you're saying, but I think that's the only way we can do it, Craig, unless you have any other suggestions from a legal perspective, I think we, we don't have anything. So if it was high grass, we have high grass, we're pretty good at that.
So you're saying that we have no report? No, our, our administrators are look at it, the, the planners look at it, and we found no violation over that we can enforce, so Mr. Shepherd indicated.
So there, there, I think there's nothing we as residents of this region do.
Well, if there, there's a concept in, in the Plankton that talks about, you know, private nuisance action. If, if the community members believe that there's a nuisance with the, with the property next door, they could try to file a private nuisance action with the courts. But as far as local code enforcement, there's no ordinance here in North Huntington that the property violates.
Thank you, Rick.
I have one other comment, that was actually up here today, and, uh, I don't know, maybe you've answered this, but, uh, I was talking to Bill Ballock, he's the one that struck the groundhog and the three, uh, raccoons. And viewing from his property, there's a huge pile of brush and tree fittings, limbs and Christmas tree. Is that a violation, Mr. Gurley?
Yes, I think we can address.
All right. Well, I think we give Josh that on, and the house to the right, uh, is Mr. Ballock, he would be more than happy to show. I think that would be caused by our proven problems, you know, they're giving them places to live, houses.
Okay.
Other than that, I mean, um, we're even with this, as far as the vegetation and that, we can't tell people what type of fence they grow, and how it looks like they did, somebody did do some work to the vines that went up the telephone poles and everything. My other concern would be, is the amount of dampness from all that with the, uh, with that heat of virus and things like that, I don't know what type of pond she has back there, or anything like that, and I don't know much if we can look into that, but that would be the two things I think we possibly need to look at.
Okay, cool, dude.
My concern is, we have one house, and I know in my ward, which is an older homes ward, you know, homes built in the forties or fifties, I've already had several calls about things of this nature. I mean, there's got to be some community out there in this nation that is dealing with this problem successfully. Our job is to protect our citizens and their value, their homes, we need to find a way to do it. I don't know if there, you know, is there something out there, or somebody have anything out there, or an ordinance that can protect our citizens?
I'm not aware of any, um, you know, with the newer subdivisions, you have homeowners associations, and...
That's where you would see this.
The developers put some into here about what type of tree wishes you can add, and how many you can have, and how many you require to have, and things of that nature. I, I don't know that the township wants to get into, you know, what type of bushes are permissible, what type of vegetation's permissible, you know, whether you're allowed to have them spaced, you know, a certain number, either, or whatnot, like, uh, developers can put into cuppings in their local subdivisions. Very difficult, but I'm sure we'll, we'll, we'll continue looking, and I'll get with Andy a little bit different.
Yeah, because we're experiencing problems that involve much more than vegetation. They involve, uh, garbage and people's...
Well, now we do regulate.
Correct.
We absolutely regulate, or junk and debris, and, and we will cite them if there's violations.
Right, they get thirty days to clean it up, and then we start the fines.
Okay. Uh, Phil? And, uh, last citizen was, uh, Craig Ben, she talked, uh, the first question she had had to do with the training facility for the firefighters. Daryl, you have anything on that?
So, so, I'm, I'm hoping to wait here for the, uh, fire, the fire facility, if you have.
Yeah, we have, we have received any?
I attended the, uh, I attended the march, and I think that was brought up in February, and I attended the march meeting of the Township Fire Association, and discussed it with them, because I've attended quite a few of their meetings over the years. And the reaction I got from them was, they were not all in favor of this idea. I, I gave them some advice on what they should do if they were, which was pretty much the same thing I said at the February meeting after Mr. Britannia brought that up, which was typically, if the fire department wants something of that nature, they meet on their own, they discuss what they want, they put it in a letter to the whole Board of Commissioners, they all sign off on it, and then some of them come to the meeting and make a presentation. Uh, we don't generally have a commissioner liaison do that type of, of work. Um, and I will tell you, like I said, they're, they're not all in favor of that process. In fact, one of the guys, one of the chiefs said, first thing, remember, guys, we had one already and failed at it. So, I think they're taking a, a long hard look at that concept, and if they, um, come to some kind of agreement, maybe we'll hear from them. But at this point, I would, I would kind of judge that to be on the back burner for them, so.
Anything else? Uh, next one was, uh, investigation, uh, I haven't heard anything, man.
Doug, we sent all the, we sent the, um, the report to the three agencies that the board commissioners had, had directed me to, and, and I believe they'll look at it, and we'll hear something, we won't, individual people may hear something, but, but even if we do, um, to be honest with you, if I was contacted by one of those agencies, I'd probably answer their questions, and I would share it with anybody else on this, on this board, the general public at this point, because I would consider it not going to be an investigation. So it's quite possible some of the staff have been contacted, or board members, that I don't know, but I would say that at some point, we'll, I assume we'll get an answer, maybe we won't, maybe we will never know. If we send it somewhere, they aren't interested, they will write us a letter back saying, we're not doing anything, so. Maybe at some point in the future, if we don't hear things, maybe the board will direct, go a direction to be, they require further on status. That's the only comment I have wanted.
Um, last one is Comcast Public Act, that we've referenced, the recent history of the winner, the streaming.
John, uh, John Shepherd and I have talked about this a couple times over the years. Um, as you know, I, I've taken it upon myself to stream the meetings, the last couple meetings. I did that as an experiment, uh, personally, to, to see what the interest would be. I mean, some people say, why would you do that, because then nobody will come to the meeting. And to be honest, we want people, or at least some of us want people at the meetings. And if everybody can sit home and watch it, wouldn't it take away from the public participation? Um, from what I've seen, I think it's a benefit. Unfortunately, tonight's meeting is not being streamed, it is being recorded, but it won't be streamed, because, John, there were some changes to the internet system, uh, the network here at the townhouse, and the current system, it doesn't support the streaming for some reason, I guess we'll have to look into it. Um, but I had told John that I would do it on my own originally, to, to see if, what the interest and feedback was, and then if it was something that was worthwhile, maybe we could go the Comcast route, because they do, that's part of the franchise fees, the franchise fee that we collect from all the residents that have Comcast is designed to do exactly that, to fund a, a paid channel, a public education government, or whatever it is. So, if, if it is something that we want to do long-term, I would like to see the township take it over, um, and maybe install something, I think, like Monroeville has. I don't know what, what equipment they have, but I would believe that we would be able to do that by the equipment, put it in here, and then feed them whatever it is, and they just post it on their channel. Um, maybe not necessarily live, but at least in a podcast-like format. I don't know, in, in my opinion, based on what I've seen so far, I think it has value. Because there's people that can't come tonight, that then go look at it later, where they hear something happened that they were interested in, and they can go back and look at it. I know the, the few meetings that I put up live, were, uh, I think there were about twenty-seven people that viewed the one live, uh, there were two hundred and thirty-three, I believe, that have viewed it since then. Um, I know there were people in various states that watched it, including Virginia and Texas, and, and some people that are out of town. So, I mean, it's up to the board, I don't know if we want to, maybe explore that. I would certainly be in favor of installing a certain permanent type setup.
It's funny that you brought this up, and I, I was thinking about the same thing, but not necessarily the Comcast, but maybe probably try to get on the township's website, um, or, or string, so, yeah, I would definitely be in favor of exploring, you know, either Comcast setup, or trying to get it on the township's website, so.
Yeah, that would be another way to do it, is just record them, and then post them on the township website, which I'm actually going to try and do with, since I couldn't stream it live tonight, hopefully this recording will come out, and I will be able to upload it to the site, uh, that I've been using, and you would still be able to go view it there. But, I mean, that's something we could do with our, with our site also. And I guess John and I have talked about that, we were just waiting a little while to see how it went. So I did walk into that, you know, under a little bit.
Okay.
That's fine. Um, anybody else, eh? Yes, uh, at the end of our response, this is the input. That time is approval minutes for public hearing on four fourteen, two thousand sixteen.
Motion approved.
Second.
This guy's, all of you in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero. The special meeting on April fourteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Motion approved.
Second.
This guy's, all of you in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero. Regular meeting of four, April twentieth, two thousand sixteen.
Motion approved.
Second.
All of you in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Ayes have seven, six zero. Zero one, that's our intention. Amen and bills?
Make motion, we pay voucher number seven two one eight three through voucher number seven two two six nine.
Second.
This guy's, all of you in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero. Staff reports, public works report, if you hope, anybody have any questions for Mr. Elder?
The only thing I have, uh, I want to comment on the company that's pulling the paving, and I've got nothing but good reviews. A lot of job, they've been doing, the guys are very, uh, nice people. Uh, there is a question as far as some backfill, which I guess we'll be talking about later. But, uh, yeah, good, they're doing a good job, our guys are doing a great job, and they have stuff ready for them, and it just seems to be moving a lot quicker than I've noticed in the past.
We've been quite pleased so far, um, you know, working with this a lot, it, um, certainly, yes, I agree with you, they're doing a good job. Our, um, the inspector that's out there for K O H, Bob Robinson, you know, he's, um, confirmed to me that, you know, he's quite pleased also, you know, with the type of work that you're doing, and, and, you know, how fast they're able to do it. So it seems to be working quite well, hopefully we can work, get them done in the future.
Yeah, their signage could be a little bit better as roads road close ahead and that, but I'm a little picky on that. Other than that, they're doing a great job.
Do you have, anybody disagree?
Yeah, I want to make a comment about that, um, at the beginning, we were posting on NEXO the rates that were being paid, uh, but I've noticed lately, we haven't, we can't continue to do that? It does help.
Yeah, if we, it depends on how, how, how well we get the schedule, and those schedule interests changes something. We can let people know it's going to be paved, but it might be difficult for us to keep that up in real time. I mean, you guys are getting like, you know, I said you got to get from Bob Robinson, just so you're at least more in the loop, that's probably more than you've ever been, most you've ever been in the loop, on, you know, sequencing, but, um...
Certainly, the people that inundate the...
They know, they know.
They're aware of what's going on.
I mean, whether we can, it's possible we can look into it, I mean, it, it's just one, that Bob would have to call us here, let us know what's going on, let the police know, send it out, I mean, it's something we can look into, to see if he can do it in, in real time, what he gives, what he gives you is more of that, you know, he gives me kind of, well, these are the next few roads that are going to be done. And then they're done in pieces, you know, like some of the roads, um, they're built, and then they're, 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 then you'll see the wearing course, but some roads have wearing on, they don't have final on, so it's, it's in pieces. So I'm not sure in real time what sort of information we could provide.
We have somebody, you know, from the engineering group that, that come on site, correct?
Yeah, that's why I'm just trying to think about what we can provide real time.
I know in the past you on the date have called the police department to let emergency services know. Now, I don't know whether the police department at that point could put out a NEXO to let people know.
Yeah.
It might not be ahead of time, it may be that morning because of the rain, and...
Yeah, it's, it's fluid, it's fluid. Depending on, depending on weather, it, they start, they stop, I mean...
But if they're not finding the police department pretty early to see a vehicle, maybe they can pick out a...
And I'm not certain if Little Runny's doing that, like Richard mentioned, this is our first time through with them. So, and we had Victor Paving for so many years as our, as our little bidder, that, um, you know, they did that, I'm not sure if Little Runny's doing that, but I can check with, I can check with Bob, just to see how they, what sort of notice they're providing back to us.
Mr. Elder, you have any further?
I, I do have one item, Mr. Martina. Um, I wanted to let the board aware of a project that we are working on as a staff. Um, last year, towards the end of the year, I was at Cranberry, and I happened to pick up on, um, it's a training about a project that Cranberry Township was working with, with Carnegie Mellon University. And, you know, I certainly got my interest, because it's something similar to what we do here as far as our road survey, our road survey goes, to be able to, you know, break the roads for paving, future paving. Um, so, I got all the contact information that I needed, and I emailed this professor from Carnegie Mellon. I was presently surprised when he returned my email, and not only did he return it, he also gave me his phone number. You know, I called this gentleman, and he went over the project, what they were working on. Um, and of course, I had given myself pitch on why he should consider North Huntington, um, in his program, you know, providing that, I get the blessing of John Shepherd, our township manager, uh, I took this information up to John. This is something that we're working on as a staff, you know, there's more than just, you know, myself involved, Andy, with his departments involved, Brian Bondi, he's kind of our computer expert, and of course, Mike's been involved, John's been involved, so we all got together and did a conference call to this gentleman, and he explained the whole program to us, what they're working on. It's a program that he's getting funding through from the Department of Transportation, a federal grant. And what they do is, they go around, and they put this device on the windshield of a vehicle, you drive around, and it surveys all the roads, it's recording all the roads. Um, it's similar to what we do to be able to do our road survey, but, you know, of course, ours is more labor intense, because it requires two guys to ride around, one guy driving, you know, the other guy with a clipboard, and just giving his opinion on, you know, certain things that he's checking off, um, you know, as far as, uh, you know, road surfacing and, et cetera, et cetera. Um, this device goes ahead and films everything, it picks out, you know, instead of picking out so much, um... It picks out, you know, it's able to pick out so much of the road surface. It just, it just continues to, not only the road surface, we can do sign inventory with it, shows exactly where all signs are. Initially, what we need to do, and it just takes one person just to drive around in a vehicle. Initially, you know, and we have it in the zoning vehicle, Brian Fonzey, he has it, he drives around and he's going to hit every street in the township. He's already been through a few neighborhoods already. It calculates all the data and he brings his data back and then it, he sends it to Carnegie Mellon. They take that information and they use it for whatever they need it for, for their, their, their study and then they'll forward it back to us to be able to include it on our G I S. Once we do the whole township industry into township, you know, we can put that device on anybody's food dump, you know, my truck, any municipal vehicle, we can put it on it. And it'll continue to update, you know, even if we had just gone down a street two weeks ago, it'll update that street again to see if there was any changes from two weeks ago in the, in the condition of that street. You know, that's the, the beauty of this whole thing, you know, it's going to be able to save us so much, you know, time and all this data, you know, be it the, be it the click of our finger versus riding around with, you know, pencil and paper. I mean, it's just, it's state of the art technology and that they're just continuing to grow on and we're a part of it, you know, we're helping to be a part of it, which is kind of exciting. You know, and the fact that, you know, we're working with the Carnegie Mellon University, which is such a highly regarded institution, you know, we're all pretty much quite pleased and excited about the whole, whole project. And he told, he told Ryan about, you know, they continue to study and look into other areas that this device can do in the future, even as far as like winter maintenance, they're, they're looking at different ways of being able to calculate what type of snows on the road, whether it's ice or, you know, wet snow to be able to, you know, help you determine how you want to treat the roads. I mean, it's just, there's so many ideas that they're continuing to explore and we're a part of it. And the best thing about it is you can't beat the price. So, I'm glad that we've thought on boards and John gave us the okay to get involved in this. You know, we still got a long ways to go and, you know, it looks quite promising. From my understanding is now that we're doing Cranberry, this is the first of working with them, we're on board now and I hear there's a whole list of communities of, you know, let the opportunity to get involved in this stuff.
Good. I agree. Next staff report is our recreation report, Dan Miller. Does anybody have any questions for Dan?
Dan, I do have one question. Somebody had asked me about the case of Boyd Fisher, he did down Indian Lake and I, I guess he's been wanting to call. And especially with Little, when he has some problems getting a little closer to the lake whenever they pass and things like that. Indian Lakes were good, you have the rocks and I knew he sprayed to keep weeds out and stuff like that. Oh, calling, was there a reason for the amount of weeds that are prior to the lake?
Yeah, actually, Commissioner, last year was the first year after going to several conferences and attending conferences on pond management, what we had discovered was that there was a lot of algae that was creeping into the pond. And even though we have our aeration fountain that can keep the algae at the, at the shore of the pond, what we found was that high grass, I won't say weeds, but high grass and vegetation that surrounds the shore of the pond works as a filter to keep all of the bad elements, if you will, from approaching into the water, which create the algae. So it's, it's really been served as a buffer for us. And what we've asked our staff to do is to put a dock, a floating dock out there. We haven't gotten to that yet, but that has been addressed with them so that people like that, younger kids, maybe especially needs kids can at least reach the water without being 50 feet back, they can at least approach the water in a closer proximity. But to answer your question, the reason for the high weeds and the development around the shore, it really works in the filter. So that's, that's what seems to us. And quite honestly, last year was the first year that, that pond was pretty much algae free throughout the summer.
So basically keeps everything from the ground rolling into the lake?
Yes.
Okay. But you are going to be looking at some type of dock system or something?
Yeah, we've even thought about just nearly a couple pallets together and create kind of a floating area out there or something that can approach the shore a little bit closer.
I think we need something a little more substantial than that. Do you want something?
Right, right.
Okay. All right, that can give an answer. Thank you.
Certainly.
Do you have anything for Mr. Ralston? Mr. Ralston, do you have anything to report?
I have no further comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Police report? And we're not here tonight.
Yeah, Lieutenant Mahinsky had a situation where he unfortunately could not make the meeting tonight, so if there are any questions that need to get back to him, I certainly could, could get the answers for any board members.
In mercy, man report. Any questions for Jean? Can you want to, again, engineering report? Fire for fifty, fifty report. Any questions on that? Subdivision land development application for this plan.
There are five applications before you this month. The first one is subdivision five of 2016, the Hansenke Plan to adjust the boundary lines between two existing parcels located on Robin Station Road is approved this date with no conditions. The new lots, lots will be lot one R, 2.9276 acres and lot three R, 7.8354 acres.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
Next item is subdivision six of 2016, the Cordis Moore Plan to adjust the boundary lines of two existing parcels located on Benson Drive and divide property from an unopened street is approved this date with no conditions. The new lots will be lot 14 R, 0.364 acres and lot 15 R, 0.3766 acres.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
Next item is subdivision seven of 2016, the Squalus Plan to adjust the boundary lines of four existing parcels located on Sunset Avenue is approved this date with no conditions. The new lots will be lot one, 2.282 acres, lot two, 2.587 acres, lot three, 2.718 acres and lot four, 2.114 acres.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
Next item is subdivision eight of 2016, the St. George Acres Lots Five and Six Revision Plan to adjust the boundary lines of two existing parcels located on St. Nicolai Drive and to remove a right of way for a temporary cul-de-sac is approved this date with no conditions.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
And finally, Site Plan Three of 2016, the Wendy's Restaurant Site Plan concerning property addressed as 9130 State Route 30 and showing plans for demolition and construction of a 3,528 square foot restaurant with a drive-through lane is granted final approval this date with two conditions. Number one, approval of the stormwater management and erosion control plans by the Westmoreland Conservation District. And number two, the out and slash property owner shall enter into a stormwater operation and maintenance agreement with the township, which shall be recorded at the Westmoreland County Recorder Deeds.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ralston. Next up is the solicitor report, Mr. Perry.
I think it's present that there are no action items on the solicitor's report this month.
Next item, Township Manager Report, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you. First item is action to approve the April check register.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
Item two is the April 2016 budget report. Is there any question? Item number three is action to approve a tax refund to MAC Realty Management LLC for tax map number 54 dash 06 dash 00 dash 0 dash 38 with the amount of $437.49 in accordance with the letter on April 15, 2016 from Westmoreland County.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
Item number four is action to approve the conservation partnership agreement between the Westmoreland County Conservation District and the township.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
Item number five is action to approve the request of the Pennswood Civic Association for the annual fireworks display at Pennswood Park on July 4th. Rain date would be July 5th.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Say no. Ayes have seven zero.
Item five is action to approve the request of the Pennswood Civic Association for the annual fireworks display at Pennswood Park on July 4th. Rain date would be July 5th.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
Item six is action to approve the request of Parker Heights Walter Fire Department dated May 2nd, 2016 for a waiver of a demolition permit fee for property of 14289 Route 30.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
Item number nine is a discussion item that's requested the township's receipt from an organization called Flat Tire Company, which is located in Greensburg. And this was actually received by Lieutenant Mahinsky and I was hoping he would be here tonight, so if the board wants to refrain from discussing this week, we can. But you can see the request for the, for Flat Tire, it's related to a 5K or 10K walk run and it encompasses both a part of North Huntington Township and Swiftly are joining community. And it looks like it's being designed as a, an event, as a charity event to raise money, but ultimately it would, if the commissioners would approve the closing of some roads in North Huntington, obviously there's some township roads involved and it's not something we've done in the past. There's also a part of the state road, Doffey Road, which certainly would have to be under jurisdiction, I believe, penned on. Of course, the roads in Swiftly would be something they would have to address. I know when I spoke to Lieutenant Mahinsky about this, he said, look, if, you know, if the commissioners want to approve this, the police department will assist, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll be okay with this, we'll, we'll do whatever we need to do. But I guess I have mixed feelings sometimes about these events. I certainly think it's a great event, but I know that the people that live along the road probably may not feel the same way, who are impacted by it. There's some time when, you know, they're, they're limited, maybe when they can access their homes. But I don't know if the board has, wants to discuss this tonight without the lieutenant here, if you want to hold it potentially until June. It's not until November, you know, the race is going to occur, the walk race event, but I'm sure if there, if it's, if something gets approved, they have a lot of planning to do on their end. It looks like, again, from the, from the letter we received, it's not the first time through for this organization. It looks like they've done this multiple times at their locations. So this is one for the board to consider tonight, or again, if you want to, if you do want to wait for the lieutenant to come back, I can put all the agenda for, for June.
Yeah, just want all the agenda for June, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
All right, yeah, I apologize. If he was on a late, it was just a late day situation in Carver, he wouldn't be here. I will do that, I'll bring that back for June and then if, if there's any questions in the interim, let us know if we'll discuss it in, in June at our meeting, when we're all ready to be here. Item 10 is action to approve a resolution to authorize overhead banners for St. Agnes Church, the Bazaar on Route 30 near Moll Slade and also on Lincoln Highway near Jody.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
Item number 11 is action to approve payment in the amount of $61,198.50. That's 50% of the total local match for the Route 30 sync-up project.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
Item number 12 is action to award the demolition of a building in 690 Main Street for luterant excavating with the amount of $11,750.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
Item 13 is action to award the salt storage fabric building to Charlotte Works Department to Penn State Construction, any amount of $69,350. There's those responsible better.
Motion approved.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Any further board comments?
Yeah, so we have something I want to bring up. The reason being is, I know we're in a contract, we're looking at a bunch of guys possibly that could retire from the police department, but back in March, our 16th meeting, it was brought for their passing ordinance on the, for the civil service regulations. And I want to see about getting that put back on the agenda and I talked to Bruce about it and I'm sure there's a lot of things that we discussed and I brought it that way. And I, I think it's something, he could do the direction of the Civil Service Board to be able to do that, be able to put out the test.
What I've been trying to do, Mike, since that meeting, because there were some questions, I've been trying to get Bill Gamble here, who was the consultant, assistant, Civil Service Commission, putting that together. Because Bill really, I consider him, you know, the expert in the area. I've tried to get him back on a few meetings and it's just, it's just not worked well on, on timing, unless we consider to be having a special meeting if the board wanted to, you know, answer, have him answer any questions. I know it sounds like you're satisfied because you spoke with Bruce, but I was trying to get Bill here for the, for the board, just in that there's questions, I thought he was the best person to answer them, but, you know, if you don't need him to come, that's certainly up to the, to this board to determine whether, you know, you want to see that happen or not. That's what I was trying to do. His schedule's been difficult and I apologize for that, but it's just, I've been trying with him to get him back here at one of our meetings.
Yeah, I just don't want to see this put on the back burner too much longer because we have two guys that have been activated, so now they're already slowed downstairs. If you have five guys at the beginning of next year and say they're going to retire, it takes you 10 months to a year to get new guys on the street and that would really be a problem for the park. It's something I think we need to look at.
I mean, I think you can do it on the old one, but I think, I truly believe, and I was involved in the meetings with the Civil Service Commission because I tried to provide them some staff assistance, we have some good members, we haven't been as involved before. Bill Gamble came to their meetings, Chelsea Dice provided legal assistance, Reversa's office. I really think if we're going to do it, I think you should go with the new ordinance. I think that new ordinance, it's up to date. It, I don't think it fundamentally changes how we do things, but I think it's up to date, it, it takes into consideration all current law, case law. I think it's more, it does more of that and it does change what we're doing. I would recommend that if we do a hiring, that we do that with the proposed ordinance, even if we modify it somewhat, I would rather go with that than go with the old ordinance again. That's just, that's just the existing regulations.
Yeah, and I'm...
They spent a lot of time...
Probably just that, yeah, and I'm into the meeting, I went to this training.
Yes, you were in the training session.
Yeah, I remember just that one question about the promotion and one year probation.
Probation piece, right.
Sorry, I was a little concerned about it and, you know, that was just something that I brought up. I'm, I'm satisfied if, you know, there's a problem down there and I hope they address it, but I don't know whether, I just kind of blind side it, I'm bringing this up, so I don't know if anybody's ready, if I could make a motion that...
I'm not big to agree with the civil service head of the city, like I've talked to Bill. I have some questions that...
He is the premier expert in this area, there's no question about it.
Would you, would you like to try to do a special meeting? And I know it's hard for the board to get together, that's why, again, I was trying to get him here on one of our meeting nights, regular meeting, work session, it's just been difficult with his schedule, I've been trying. To be honest with you, we're at a point right now where I think he can come to our July meeting, I know that's still two months away, he can't make it in June, he's always testing and he's all over the state doing work. I'd be more than happy to do a special meeting, that's something you guys would have to be able to attend and then, you know, check his schedule. I mean, it's not a problem to do that, have a meeting, discuss it, have us, as a topic, that's to get onto you guys.
Yeah, like I said, I just want to bring you up to him, so it's fresh in our memory, it's something I think we, like I said, we're going into the new contract and stuff like that, he would never know what's going to happen.
Well, I think civil service is ready to go too. They were geared up, they spent a lot of time going through it, they, they brought up the speed and...
Yeah, I'm trying to just put them on the back burner.
Right. Or you guys want to proceed though? I mean, your thought, my intent is to have it here in July, because I still want to have it here, it's still, I have the idea, we've just been scheduling.
I would wait until July, we take one of these in July.
Yeah. He says he's able to take one of these.
I think it's the work session, I think it's our July work session.
You will? Announcement?
Your announcements tonight, Department of Parks Recreation has officially started the tag fish contest, will continue through October, Indian Lake and Okalo. Participants can win a prize by turning the appropriate ATF tag to the townhouse. Discount amusement park tickets are available for sale at the townhouse. More information, please contact our administration office. And finally, Department of Parks Recreation is pleased to announce open enrollment for the 2016 summer day camps. Various day camps and mini camps are designed and are available for children ages three through 14, and as being due.
One more question?
Motion approved.
Second? Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, a seven zero. And thank you all, we appreciate you coming by. You deserve to be here. Thank you. Have a good day.